Good evening, everyone. It's 5 o'clock and I am calling the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, we're not taking any more citizen comments. The meeting has been called to order. Let the record show that all council members are present except former Mayor Pro Tem, Keon Wickerson. Excuse me, I'm under the weather, I got pneumonia, but I'm trying to press through this. So, we're going to start off our invocation with Mr. Don Smith and we have our pledge allegiance by Councilmember Gonzalez. Would you all please rise?
Laura, thank you for all you do for us. We are lucky to live in a country that has so many freedoms that are not found in other countries. At times, we may be afraid to attempt what God asks us to do because we feel incapable or unworthy. Remember, He is the one who gives us the strength and authority to do what He asked us to do. As the new city council comes together, let them be guided by God's glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every just cause.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to approve a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Boe.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem, call.
I second.
All in favor, yes. The motion carries six to zero. We will now move to presentations. Mayor Pro Tem, call and Executive Director Janelle Ford will be taking my place to do the Star Awards and the National EMS Week proclamation. Madam Secretary.
PR 23012, National EMS Week Proclamation.
Chief Kobinski, could you and the firefighters please come to the front so you can be recognized for your outstanding work throughout the community and saving lives?
What a wonderful evening when we can give accommodations and say good things about our EMS. I am so proud on behalf of the mayor that we're able to talk about our emergency medical staff.
Thank you. And the proclamation reads as, "Whereas emergency medical services practitioners have a critical role in our healthcare system as first responders to minor and major medical emergencies, and whereas they are highly trained and prepared to provide immediate life-saving care, often in high-risk situations, to patients suffering any number of medical emergencies, and whereas these brave professionals arrive at unspeakable scenes like car accidents, child drownings, violent crimes, drug overdoses, and heart attacks, and must put aside their own emotions to focus on reviving and stabilizing patients. And whereas Colleen's 218 fire rescue officers respond to more than 20,000 calls for emergency medical services each year, and their professionalism and skill saves countless lives. And whereas the number of calls increase yearly, the Colleen Fire Department meets the challenges annually with continual training and modernizing trucks and equipment. And whereas the American Heart Association has recognized Colleen Fire Department's excellence since 2015 with its Mission Lifeline Award for providing the highest quality of care in the emergency treatment of cardiac arrest patients. And whereas EMS Week has been celebrated nationally since 1974. To honor those who provide frontline emergency medical care to our communities, and the City of Colleen is proud to join this observance and recognize the men and women of our Colleen Fire Department. Now therefore, Mayor Debbie Nash King, by virtue of authority invested in her, as mayor of the City of Colleen does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as EMS Week."
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, Council, all city leadership, thank you for recognizing this week. This is an important week for these guys and gals in the light blue and the dark blue long sleeves. Those of us in the coats, for the most part, the exception of Chief Kemp, who's battalion chief on duty today. You, the citizens, and you, the city council, give us the tools to be able to do this job more than 20,000 times a year. And what's even more proud to me is the fact that this is the longest-standing, fire-based EMS system in the state of Texas. Back in the 1970s, the City of Colleen was the first fire department to have paramedics that was part of a fire department. And even to this day, you go to other communities outside of Colleen but in Bell County, they still have contracted EMS services that are not members of the community. These men and women are members of your community. They come in here every day, each and every day. They don't go somewhere else for another job. They spend 20, sometimes 30, years here, and they provide service to you, the citizens. And that's what's even more exciting than having this proclamation, is that these men and women provide the service to you. So, let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro... Mayor Pro... Um... Mayor... Madam... Madam...
PR 23013, Colleen Star Award.
The Colleen Star Award, it allows for each council member to publicly nominate and recognize a Colleen citizen. They are acknowledged for their noteworthy contributions to this community, to help inspire other citizens to engage in making our city a better place for everyone. Council members have a designated month to nominate a citizen, and this month is Councilwoman Gonzalez, and she's going to present the May recipient of our Star Award.
This Star Award is on behalf of former Councilmember Ryaco Adams. He nominated this individual. Mr. Ernest Caffey, please come to the front.
Thank you.
So, ladies and gentlemen, I'm presenting this award on behalf of former Councilmember Ryacos Adams to Mr. Ernest Caffey. I'm just going to read this, sir, okay? This is what was written on his behalf. You were nominated as a resident of District 2. You first, you are a retired First Sergeant with 24 years of dedicated service in the Army, and you have a remarkable exemplary spirit of volunteerism and community engagement. As a leader of the local Masonic Lodge and Temple, you've been a catalyst for promoting volunteerism and fostering a strong sense of community among the members. Your leadership has inspired countless individuals to dedicate their time and efforts to making a positive impact in Colleen and beyond. Your commitment to community service extends far beyond your role with the Masonic Temple. Mr. Ernest has been an active member of Pride of Colleen Lodge, Number 242, where he continues to contribute to the betterment of his community. As an advisor for the Knights of Pythagoras Youth Fraternity, he mentors young men, providing guidance on career opportunities, school, and life choices. As a mentor for at-risk youth, he provides guidance and support to help them navigate challenges to achieve their full potential. In addition to his involvement with various organizations, he selflessly volunteers his time at the Mission Soup Kitchen in downtown Colleen, where he works diligently to ensure that individuals facing food insecurity receive warm meals and compassionate support. Moreover, he plays an integral role in supporting the homeless community by volunteering at the Moss Rose Community Center. So, it is with great admiration and appreciation for Mr. Ernest Caffey that he receives this Star Award today for his exceptional volunteer service. His compassionate spirit and tireless efforts are an inspiration to us all. We are privileged to have him as a beacon of hope and kindness within our community. Congratulations, sir.
First of all, I want to thank, thanks, thank you for the award and on behalf of the Prince Hall family, who I could not have achieved this award without their support, I'd like to thank them and that's all I got to say is, thank you.
Thank you for your... Congratulations.
Thank you, Council Gonzalez, and also Mayor Pro Tem, call for filling in for me. And Mr. Caffey, you do a lot of great work in the community, and that is a well-deserved award for you. Madam Secretary, we will now go into our citizen comments, I mean citizen petition.
CP 23012, Riley Beck, repeated city drainage water flooding at 806 Evergreen Drive.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
You have four minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you and to make this issue a public record. My name is Riley Beck, as was mentioned, and I own a rental home on 806 Evergreen Drive, just down the road here, literally a three-minute drive from here. I provide low-income rent for low-income families with this home. The problem is, is this home is flooding three to four times a year. I had, I had sent in a video I wanted you to see, but I wasn't permitted to show that tonight, so let me kind of explain what's happening. Water is converging from about two or three different streets right down to my house. So, the water is coming up over the curbs, and this video shows that you can't even hardly see the curbs. I sent it out to Olivia in an email. If you get a chance, please look at it, it's just 1 minute 21 seconds. So, the city water is coming up over the curbs and then flooding into the house. It's flooding through the front doors. You'll see there, like, there's standing water on the front porch, and then luckily the house is a little higher, it still does go in the front, but then it goes down the sides. And as the water goes down the sides, there's so much water coming down the street that the water is literally, it literally has a current, like you'd see in a river, like, so as you see that. What happens with that is, it's just completely damaging the house. The foundation with that kind of water going down the sides of it is sinking on both sides. We have been addressing this since 2017 and 2018. I've said, you'll see dozens of emails, if you look at that email that was sent out, dozens and dozens of emails, phone calls, and things that we have sent in, that our tenants have sent in. We've had unfortunately three to four tenants who have been flooded out of the house. Very, very sad situation. The other slide that I wanted to show was just of how many, you know, times that we've tried. We, you know, 2017, fall 2017, fall 2017, home floods again, tenant calls in 2018, then we called, city employees investigate, but they talk about doing a CIP project. CIP project for the public is a capital improvement plan, you know, basically saying, hey, yeah, we see that this is an issue, but nothing has been done. That's a lot of years that we've been enduring this pain. I feel that my patience and trust so far in regards to this issue have been to my detriment. I believed in bringing things up like a chain, you know, I was in the military, and you start with, you know, the levels who I thought would address it, city engineer, city environmentalist, that kind of thing, it has not been done. Madam Mayor had to leave, I guess, sorry to see that, but we had, so anyways, yeah, I feel like nothing has been happening in all of those years. Every time it's been brought up, it seems to be neglected, and meanwhile flooding my tenants literally out of the house and home. The next slide that I wanted to share is of Texas Water Code 11 dash, 11.086, which states, "No person may divert or impound the natural flow of surface waters in this state, or permit a diversion or impounding by him to continue in a manner that damages the property of another by the overflow of the water diverted or impounded." I feel like that has not happened in this case, as far as stopping, you know, the water. It's been permitted to continue. Very, very sad.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, is my...
Yes, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Councilmember Segar.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segar.
Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you. And I just wanted to ask the city manager, I did get the videos, I think most of us here on it, and I looked at it, and I looked, you know, the first time he sent it several months ago, so my question addressed to the city manager from the city's perspective, is there a resolution to this, or is there something that we can do as a city?
There are a couple of possibilities. One, we're applying to FEMA for a grant just to buy the house. That's one thing, because the only capital project, and I guess the reason Mr. Riley feels has been unresponsible, it's a multimillion-dollar project to put the drainage underground. And so, our current city engineer is working on a grant from FEMA, they have a flood program, but I can't guarantee that there'll be success in that. And I think this flooding's been going on for a very long time, well before 2017, but those are really our options.
And I kind of thought the same thing. I don't know if you'd be, you know, willing to, if that happens to sell that property, because it's going to be pretty much at whatever the praise value of it is, and with what's going on, who knows what that is, but I think that that's probably going to be your only solution there.
I would definitely be willing to do that. What I wish would happen though is with the appraised value of what it would have been worth had it not flooded, had been flooded and all of this damage would have been caused.
So, at least you know right now, at least we're moving in some kind of direction. So, hopefully, I know that's not what you want immediately, but pretty much at least you got a little bit of an answer to what you've probably been looking for, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all for looking into this.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you read everything on the citizen comments for me, please?
Citizen comments. This section allows members of the public to address the council regarding any items other than public hearing item on the agenda for council's consideration. Each person shall sign up in advance, may speak only one time, and such address shall be limited to four minutes. A majority of city council is required for any time extensions. The mayor and council members shall have one minute to respond to citizen comments with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue.
Madam Secretary, Mayor Pro Tem, call, she'll be reading the standards, governor's expectation, Mayor Pro Tem, would you please read that?
The rules of decorum. Persons attending city council meetings should observe the same rules of priority decorum and good conduct as they would show in a courtroom. A place of worship or at any other serious or solemn occasion during which matters of importance are being considered. Visitors will refrain from engaging in chatter, private conversations, and making other distinct, distracting noises. While the city council is in session, phones and other electronic devices should be set off to the silent mode. Visitors should not applaud, boo, clap, or otherwise utterly express approval or disapproval of the speech of another person in a manner likely to disturb the meeting. When addressing city council, persons wishing to address the city council on any matter listed on this agenda may be recognized by the chair provided the person has completed a citizen speaker registration form and presented to the city secretary prior to the beginning of the regularly scheduled city council meeting, or immediately following their address to the city councils. Speakers shall approach the lectern and give his name and city of residence before speaking. Speakers shall address the mayor and city council with civility that is conducive to an appropriate public discussion. All public comments should be addressed through the chair. Each speaker will be allowed four minutes to speak. A majority vote of the city council is required for any time extensions. No person shall be allowed to address the city council more than one time per agenda item. When addressing the chair, persons may not engage in discussion with the city council or staff during council deliberations unless specifically asked a question by council member. Persons who have been asked a question by council member must recognize the chair, must be recognized by the chair, before being allowed to speak. The chair may end any question and answer session between council members and a member of the public in order to facilitate the order of business. Printed materials, if you have something that you're sharing, persons may present printed material to the secretary to distribute to the city council during a meeting. No disruptions. Persons attending the city council meetings should remain seated or may stand in the back of the room and come and go so long as it does not disrupt the meeting. Persons in attendance should not carry signs or place cards. No person attending any city council meeting shall delay the proceedings of or refuse to obey the orders of the chair. Removal. Disturbances, transgressions of the rules of disorderly conduct in the city council chamber or other city council meeting rooms may cause the transgressor to be removed from the meeting. The chair of the meeting should exercise control over persons who disrupt the meeting and the following order of action. Call the person to order advising that the person of the infraction. Advise the person that the infraction must cease immediately, or the person will be ordered to leave the meeting. Order the person to leave the meeting. A police officer may remove an individual or individuals for disrupting a meeting as authorized by Texas Penal Code, Section 4205.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, call. Each resident, you have four minutes. The first person to speak on citizen comment is Michael Forino. He has four minutes, but you must stick to the agenda item. Thank you. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Michael Forino, Colleen City resident. Discuss and consider, or discuss a complaint against an elected official. While I'm generally aware of the who and the what, as that person has not spoken, and I'm not aware that they're here, I'll just keep things general tonight. Conduct, code of conduct violations, harassment, retaliation, interference of employment, and defamation of character. I can speak to that for some personal experiences that I've had here. Defamation of character. Madam Mayor, when you let me know about an email that was circulating around behind the scenes that was full of false accusations against me, and I had to put in a public records request to get that information, and then subsequently, the person to whom the email was sent had their spouse here that night trying to physically intimidate me. I have, in public, out of chambers, I had discussion with, to, and about Mr. Segara with regard to the grocery store issue, and Ms. Gonzalez was there for that. And it didn't escalate to name-calling, it immediately went to name-calling from Mr. Segara. Inappropriate. And Mr. Whitson was also present there as well. So, those are matters of fact. That's not conjecture, that's not anything that I'm pulling out of my backside. When we come to complaints in general, I've sent emails to you, Madam Mayor, during the course of this week, and I asked you quite plainly, quite blankly, with copies to the press, you didn't want to answer questions to the press. What do you do here? And your response was, in short, I have to ask everyone else what your job is. I ask, you seem, you and the rest of the body seem to have relegated yourselves to spectators in your own government. You've allowed the city manager to take control of the agenda, to roadblock us when it comes to citizen petition, which is not his right to do. That's clear violation of the First Amendment. Our petition as citizens are to the elected body. It's not subject to approval by an unelected official. And shy of a very scant number of topics that would, you know, be violent, et cetera, et cetera, that don't bear mentioning. et cetera, that don't bear mentioning, I mean, anything that we want to say, whether I agree with the person or not, they have the absolute right to stand here and speak their mind. And I would say that, Mr. Solomon, this is in no way bearing on you, this is your second meeting, so, I mean, I just want to be fair and clear that this is more probably instructional for you. I mean, this is something that I have a history with, and we go through the big homily about standards of conduct, and go back again to the night where I was nearly attacked by the former Mayor Protem. If, again, if I'd taken one step around this podium and come towards you, there would have been a dog pile of police officers on top of me. Yet, when it was the other way around, the last thing on your mind, Madam Mayor, and I do apologize that you're not feeling, that you're not feeling as well as you should, but your first action should have been to have the police escort him forcefully back to the dais or out of the building. I mean, it's a two-standard system here. And then what do we get in return? Intimidation and everything else. I mean, for years, plural, we had one officer in the room on detail, and then every time we, as citizens, push back, you flood the room with cops. Why? What does that say? Clearly, based on recent events, we're not the problem. We're not the ones who have any ill intent toward you. It has come around the other way. I mean, if we're frustrated, I mean, you say that you're the full-time transparent mayor. I'm sorry, again, I know you're not feeling well, but I'm not seeing it. We need to see you more. We're going to be pushing close to 200,000 people pretty soon in this town, and we need better leadership than what we have seen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Melissa Brown. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Tonight's the first night that the public has the ability to view the properties that the city of Colleen is considering purchasing. So, really, the citizens have had since Friday or sometime over the weekend when they've seen the agenda to really see what it is, and not able to really form an opinion of it. Never heard about it until tonight. But I will ask a couple of questions about the purchase of real property for animal services. This is a much smaller location than where we're currently located. They have fewer kennels for dogs and for cats. They have 25 feet exactly set back on each side of that building in order to expand. There are no dog runs, there's no way for those animals to be exercised. It backs up to a neighborhood that is exactly 25 feet behind it. Has anyone talked to those neighbors to see how they feel about putting a dog kennel right in front of, right behind their back fences? That gets loud. When dogs start barking, it starts the chain, it gets loud, it can go on for a long time. And especially because they're all in one area, this is something that I think that those neighbors around there should have the opportunity to weigh in on, and they should be notified about this before the city makes the decision to purchase a property from someone that is involved with the city. If this is approved, though, would this be taken off the bond, and the bond amount be reduced by that amount? For the other one, what purpose does the city have for purchasing the Hacks building? I love that building, I want to see it restored. There's only been a maximum of four months, according to what the city staff says in the staff report about why we would be purchasing it, since the previous owner passed away and the heirs have put it on the market. Maximum four months, because she passed away in January of this year. I'm not a real estate agent, but with the way, the condition of that property and what needs to be done with it, I don't think four months is enough time to give it a chance to sell on the private market. And what would be the purpose for the city? What are we going to do with that building once we have it? If we turn it over to KEDC, it's still off the tax rolls, and then anything, lease amount or sales amount will go to KEDC, and the city is spending the money on it upfront. So I would just like to know what the purpose is. And then the complaint against an elected official. Well, we're all here, nobody knows who the elected official is, even though if it was a staff member, we would have to identify who that staff member was. I know this, we've been through this before. We don't know what type of complaint this is, but every single person sitting in front of me right now ran on transparency. Transparency means making this open to the public. It should be held out here on the dais, the whole discussion, not taken behind closed doors, so that people can be protected. If this is a complaint that warrants a full investigation, it should be done by an outside neutral entity. This is one time where I think if it warrants investigation fully, then it should be incumbent upon the city to contact the rangers or another entity, so they can come in and look at it and be unbiased.
I have seen in here, even with this today, I could have a complaint against the mayor because there was nowhere on this agenda that said, "Read off the governing standards decorum." That was read off in an attempt to make sure people stay in line and don't say what the city council doesn't want them to say, make sure they're kept quiet, and intimidate them to say, "If you get one step out of line, we're going to remove you," and the decorum says, "We can have the police take you out of here." That's threats and intimidation. We've all been here before, there was no need to go through that, just because someone might not like something that we say.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Conde Cooper?
Conde Cooper, Colleen resident. Thank you again, Mayor Protem, council, city staff. I was coming to speak in reference to the purchasing of the property. I read the agenda packet. Again, in the revitalization process, I understand why that something needs to be done with that property. Unfortunately, the owner, the previous owner of that building was an Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce member, and so we were definitely saddened to see and to hear and find out about her passing. It's been longer than four months as far as the city or city staff knowing about the condition of that building, because we know that Ms. Shirley was active in having conversations about how to get assistance in the condition, helping with the condition of that property. As we're going through the revitalization process and understanding how important it is to try to save and salvage these properties, but how expensive the work can be done, especially when you're a historic district area, there are things that you can't do, there are things that you can do, and there are things that you have to do. And so I think the conversation of at least purchasing that property, building into the fact that the city can apply for certain grants to help assist in that property, and then it does state in that packet the conversation of putting it back on the tax docket. Me, as a downtown property owner, I'm excited for that, because it will increase our property values, it will bring that foot traffic, and then with the downtown advisory committee, we could actively have engaged conversations on what type of business does the downtown area need in that building. So I'm excited to start that conversation and not letting that building, you know, just continue to deteriorate. In reference to the conversation about the elected official, I think, one, in reference to, sometimes you do have to repeat some rules, and I think a lot of times, people mask citizen or right and freedom of speech, but they don't come with civility. And so sometimes you do have to remind it, because when you realize things are getting out of hand, like the situation the gentleman mentioned, it wasn't just for us citizens, it was for council as well. It was to make sure that we are aware of the situation, that we can bring professionalism back into the area. Mistakes are made, emotions get hot, and I'm not masking anything for anyone, but I think at the same time, if we really care about the condition of our community and growing in a professional standard, then you have to repeat those standards. And so I appreciate that being mentioned, because we see a lot of new faces at council meetings lately, and so that one speaks to what you guys are doing in promoting with the communications department, promoting what's being done in the city with city staff and what they are doing in the area. I'm going to say, as I've been coming to council meetings, I've probably missed maybe 10 meetings in two and a half years. You guys are some of the most active council members I have ever seen, and so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. No one's perfect, things can be better, but I would love to see more people with opinions join committees, join boards, volunteer personally, and then we can start putting opinion into, putting a little value to it. I appreciate all of you guys, and if y'all have any questions on anything going around, I would love to continue to just continue to be a part and engage in the community. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. Mrs. Wilkerson, Angelique Wilkerson?
Angelique Wilkerson, resident of the great city of Colleen, Texas. To the council, Mayor Nash King in her absence, Mayor Protem, Nina Cobb, Mr. Cagle. Our friend, Mr. Smith, opened today with a statement about the freedoms we so enjoy. As Americans, we embrace our freedoms that so many other countries will never experience. And whether true or false, good or bad, whether we agree or not, the freedom of speech is one that is often exercised. I want to thank the Mayor Protem for sharing the decorum, because it's necessary in doing things decent and in order, and sometimes lessons are forgotten, and as a classroom teacher, we repeat often. I'm here because of Agenda Item 17. And you know, when I think about complaints, complaints are designed to hurt, to expose, to condemn. And individuals who throw those complaints must be careful of the stones they throw and the seeds they sow, for it will come back, the good, the bad, the ugly, and the I'm here because I want to say thank you. It is so easy to bring up the negatives, but I want to say thank you for all of the work that you all do daily. This is not an easy task. Your sacrifices are recognized, your time and your talent, and so I want to encourage you to keep moving forward. Stay focused on your purpose and your why. You're here because you were elected. People want you to help and serve, and I want to encourage you. I also want to say and put into the room, "Touch not thou anointed and do his prophet no harm." We are all one false accusation away from having our lives ruined, so be careful in all of your doing and stay focused on your purpose.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilkerson. There may be a mispronunciation of your last name.
Good evening, everyone. I am speaking on number 17, and I am addressing all of you. I'm concerned about the amount of money that's being spent. I have been seeing other citizens come up and voice their opinion on this, too. I'm just adding to that list. What?
You're fine.
Am I okay?
You're fine. When we start looking at the decorum and what we're speaking on from the agenda, number 17, DS 23055, states that it discussed a complaint against an elected official.
Right.
So, we're not talking about money, but keep on, I'm going to wait for you to keep yes. We don't want to talk about money, we want to talk about that 17. But keep going.
Well, this is my complaint.
Okay.
This is my complaint.
Thank you.
I'm just adding two other complaints. I don't, I don't understand why we are millions and dead, and we keep adding to it. I just don't understand that. To me, the only exception should be our first responders. The rest of it should be in deep discussion, one item after another. Not everybody coming in here and voting yes.
Ma'am, we have to stay on the agenda. I am sorry, not the first responders or not the money. We have to talk about the complaint against the elected.
I am talking about the complaint.
Ma'am, we're speaking about money and the first responders, I'm sorry. If you would please continue with number 17, you have 2 minutes and 56 seconds to go.
What do you want me to say? You tell me, since you seem to know.
I would like for you to speak on the agenda item that you see at number 17.
And I am speaking on that.
Mayor Protem, I'll try to help. I think what this is, is a specific complaint against an elected official, not anything that someone might want to come up and make a new complaint.
This is a specific complaint against all of you.
Yes, ma'am, and that's not on the agenda.
Really?
I apologize, ma'am, but it is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak in reference to what's on the agenda, we would love to hear it.
Unbelievable. Well, I guess I'm done, then.
Ma'am, please have a seat. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts tonight.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor Protem and city council members. Really, I'd love to piggyback off of what Ms. Conde Cooper said and Ms. Angelique Wilkerson. You know, I want to thank you all for what you do. I know most of you, and I know that most of you are probably from somewhere else. Most of us in this room are probably not from the city of Colleen. You know, I am from somewhere, somewhere else, and I'm a veteran, similar to most of you all, and you guys have decided to commit your efforts, your time and energy to do some amazing things here. So though there are complaints against city officials, what I want to do is be encouraging to you all as well to continue to do a job that I probably don't want to do, and most of us in here do not want to do. There are going to be complaints, there are going to be some things that aren't perfect about any of us in here, but I want you guys to know that I stand behind you, I support you all.
In reference to, in reference to the complaint. And you were not on the agenda, it was in reference to a complaint. This gentleman is speaking in reference to the complaint, as well as giving a compliment with the complaint. Thank you very much, ma'am, we really appreciate you, and we, the point of orders will come from the dais. Thank you.
In reference to a complaint against a city official, with everything that's going on in this city, I am disappointed that certain members will take the effort, time, and energy to spend it on doing something as petty as it could be. I would encourage every member of this community to take time to help somebody, as you guys are doing in this community. The person or people who probably made the complaint or doing this and spending the time doing what they're doing probably drove past somebody on the way in who needed help. So I just want to encourage everybody to continue to help each other, help somebody, do something positive in this community, because 165, 160,000 people in this community needs our help and our positivity, and none of us are perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price? Sean Price? Or is it another S?
Correct, it would be me.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Price of Hell's Kitchen, Colleen. I have a complaint, my item is number 17. I have a complaint against the city council.
Yes, sir.
Primarily your statement of trying to chill the free speech of citizens, right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
With the decorum, and this display right here, what you did with this one lady by gaveling her and then not gaveling this man about the...
Sir, I'm elected to follow parliamentary procedures.
To discuss, right? So we are, and I am discussing this, this is about the mayor, right? And this picture that I got right here in my city bill, okay? I don't see any diversity there. Not only that, I want to know why we're utilizing a controversial film about homosexuality in children's films, and we're displaying that in the city government.
Mr. Price, thank you for coming tonight. Please stay on your topic, be 17.
This was, this was done by the city council members.
It would be citizens' comments against an elected official.
This is the person, this is who my complaint is against.
Thank you very much for following instructions the decorum has been given to you. If you cannot follow that decorum, then, sir, I will ask an officer to ax you out.
Threatening to have me arrested, right?
No, sir, never. Just want you to stay on B-17. Sir, you cannot give just random conversation in reference to newspapers. We're taking comments on B-17. Okay.
Commenting on B-17.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, city staff in respective place. I just wanted to make a comment about item 17, and as a military officer, I want to thank you all for what you do. It's not an easy job. It's not an easy decision. Of course, with anything, everyone's not going to agree with everything you do, but I thank you for what you do, and I just want to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. And we as citizens, not only of this city, but of the United States of America, I think we need to come together, and we need to figure out how to continue to go forward. So, just keep doing what you're doing, and thank you kindly. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say, basically, that there was an incident this week that I wanted to thank my councilperson about Jessica Gonzalez. Our apartments were without water for five days, and our landlord was MIA. This is in regards to actually the engineers to help with the sale of the building.
Ms. Cook, I know that there are great things that our councilmembers do, and I know everyone have a lot. We have to stay on the agenda.
This is in regards to what happened with the sale of our building. If the engineers had had the help with the sale of the building, the problem that started all this would have been known, because it was known, it was disclosed, and everything else.
Ma'am, if you would please stay on the agenda. After this council meeting, I'm going to give a brief pause, and you may have a time to speak with Mrs. Gonzalez. Thank you very much, Mrs. Cook. Mr. Bill Paquet.
I may have mispronounced your name, sir, but please...
No, you did very well. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Mr. Cagle. I'll keep this really simple. I'm sorry that we no longer have Ken Wilkerson on the council. I know there are people that don't care for him. I know when he first started, we kind of bumped heads, but we mended our ways very quickly, and I have enjoyed many conversations with him. Now, when it comes time to replace him as an at-large council member, I hope you folks will do what you did last time when Mayor Nash King had to step down from her District 2 council seat and just let the council go ahead and interview applicants and find an appropriate person. I think that worked out very well. You had, I think, maybe four applicants, and I didn't know Mr. Adams at all, but I was quite pleased with his performance and service on the council. And I don't think doing it that way costs the city of Colleen anything. You folks had to spend some time doing the interviews, but rather than have an election with the associated cost, with that, when, you know, we can't get people to show up for regular elections, I don't think that spending any money on a special election to, you know, replace that council member is in the best interest of our citizens. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Anka Niagu, Colleen ETJ. I'm going to speak on two topics. The first one is 806 Evergreen Drive, the flooding problem. When I saw this on the agenda, I quickly looked on Google Earth, and I could tell right away that that particular house has a lot of flooding problems. And first of all, I am glad to hear that the city is working with this homeowner. From my personal opinion as an engineer, this is not entirely the city's fault, because the city didn't build a house and did not build a driveway, so it would be the home builder. But I do appreciate, and I hope that the city will keep working with this homeowner. I believe from an engineering point of view that there is a solution. I'm not going to go into it because I don't have the time, and I'm going to speak on another topic, but I do appreciate you guys working with this homeowner. Regarding the Animal Services Quarantine Building, from the presentation, it states, "Department of State Health Services conducts inspections annually. Condition of the building has been cited on inspections in the past several years. Department of State Health Services could close the facility and halt operations if the condition is not addressed." This raises several questions. One is, so this has been happening for several years. In the past year, the city council approved additional animals to be handled by the Colleen Animal Services. You approved miniature pigs, you approved chickens, you approved for gavasus shelter animals to be handled by the Colleen Shelter, even though the Colleen Shelter could be shut down by the state. You did that. You added more to the problem. I don't understand why. Moving on, the present, oh, and actually, I do have a copy of one of the inspections from last year. I was on the Animal Advisory Committee. And let me quote, this is from the state. I'm just going to read a few things. "Colleen Animal Services continues to make improvements to the existing facilities, but there continue to be areas that require attention and general husbandry. Canine quarantine building. The cinder blocks continue to chip away. Surfaces create health risk. Canine adoption. Drain covers are still a concern in this building. Some are present with cracks, which create sharp edges and can injure a dog. In general, cleaning of dust, dirt, grime, fencing is needed to prevent potential disease transmission." I have copies of this. I only read a little bit of it. Please send these to the council. Again, you approved additional animals to facilities that cannot even, that are not appropriate for the animals that they had at the time. Looking at the presentation, Eastlake Vet Clinic, according to this, it costs $300 per square foot for a 6,000-square-foot veterinary facility. However, it costs $766 per square foot for a holding building? What kind of holding building would that be? Is it going to have gold-plated floors? I mean, what kind of quarantine facility is that, that it costs $766 per square foot? Additionally, according to this, utilities for the vet clinic cost $6 per square foot per year. For the quarantine, a small quarantine holding building, it costs $12 per square foot per year, twice as much. Could somebody please explain this? And do not make a decision until questions are answered. These numbers do not make sense. Additionally, here it says completion date for the vet purchase, the veterinary clinic purchase, is as soon as it is approved. That's not true. It needs remodeling.
Mrs. Anka, council, would you like to give Mrs. Anka another minute?
Thank you.
They voted no.
And thank you. I didn't say thank you.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Pro Tem, and Mayor Debbie Nash King in her absence. I'm here to speak on item 17, the complaint against an elected official. I got a, it was a Facebook post by Mr. Green concerning a complaint of harassment, retaliation, interference of employment, and defamation of character. It was an invite to come down to the city council to talk about Mayor Debbie Nash King and her code of conduct. I looked up harassment. It says intimidation. Retaliation is revenge or the action of harming someone. Interference of employment, when an individual other than employer intentionally interferes with another one's individual's employment. And defamation of character, which defamation is typically defined as a false statement someone makes about you, which they publish as a statement or fact, and which harms you personally or professionally, or it causes any kind of damage to you. So I saw the post, and I had to come down and speak because I felt that it was wrong, period. The post has been shared 27 times by Ms. Melissa Brown, it's went around, then Ms. Phyllis Jones, it's went around, and it's crazy that this is going on. So I said, okay, let me come down here and just talk on behalf of what's going on here. Mr. Ricky Green, which I don't know him as well, I know he was a Colleen Daily Herald worker, so... The subject I'm talking about is the complaint against Mayor Debbie Nash King, an elected official. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, please keep the decorum to a lower level. Speak to the person next to you. Please do not scream when another person is speaking. Thank you. Thank you very much. The decorum police officer escort are out. Mrs. Watkins?
Uh-huh.
Please continue.
Okay. On the post, it was told to come down and to complain, or various complaints against any of the officials, but it was basically about Mayor Debbie Nash King. All I have to say is this, that the information that was said was false. For intimidation, retaliation, interference of employment, defamation of character for Mr. Green, for Mayor Debbie Nash King's. The letter from the general manager from KDH reads, "To whom it may concern, Ricky Green was not terminated from KDH News. That is not a correct statement. Mr. Green filed a complaint about a city official harassing him. KDH News takes all harassment complaints very seriously. We investigated the issue and found no evidence of anything that could be considered any type of harassment by the city officials that was credible. After the investigation was completed, KDH News' position and recognition was to reassign Mr. Green to another area that would not involve city news coverage. Both parties agreed and were satisfied with the resolution of the claim. Several weeks later, Mr. Green made some monetary compensation demands and some changes to his work schedule. KDHD News did not feel comfortable in accepting these demands, so both parties mutually agreed to part ways. The decision had no mention of anything concerning the complaint filed by Mr. Green. Signed, Terry E. Gandy." The post said, "A complaint against Mayor Debbie Nash King against harassment, retaliation, interference of employment, and defamation of character." Everyone has a right to their opinions and feelings, but tearing down your mayor, your city officials, is not decent in order. This may be politically motivated, and if it is, if it's the only way you can get into a seat that you need to be elected by, you need to find something else to do. You need to be in these seats because you all have been put in these seats because you were voted in. Debbie Nash King, Mayor Debbie Nash King, was put in that seat because she was voted in by the people here. Complaints, comments, we're going to have those. We're going to have these issues, but as a city, we need to stop the foolishness and get it together. We complain about all of our people here. None of us sit up here. None of us go on, we don't run races. We don't do anything to get into elected seats, but we're always complaining about something. We need to start working against the few things that we need to work on. Homelessness, the mental issues, the food deaths, things of that nature. So I'm here to say, no weapon form shall prosper in this. And as far as in James 3:16, since I am a pastor, do not want to be counted wise to be a reputation of wisdom. Here's what you do. Live well, live wisely, live humbly.
Ms. Watkins?
Mm-hmm.
Reverend Watkins, I heard you say that you were a pastor. Your minutes have exhausteded.
Okay.
Let us take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Cagle, so he can get me back on track. Mr. Cagle, where are we?
I believe we're through with, I believe we're through with citizen comments, and so we'll be on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, I cannot really lose my thoughts. I just got through with a treatment. Would you please conduct the meeting from here?
Madam Secretary, we are ready for the consent agenda.
MN 23009, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April 11, 2023. MN 23010, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April 25, 2023. RS 23082, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for the design coordination of the Skylark Field Automated Weather Observation System AWAS relocation in the amount of $73,900. RS 23084, consider a memorandum resolution amending the uniform rental agreement with Centos for an additional four-year term in an amount of $200,000 for FY 2023. RS 23085, consider a memorandum resolution approving amendments to the economic development policy. RS 23086, consider a memorandum resolution amending the professional services agreement with Centex Alcohol and Rehabilitation Center to not exceed an amount of $70,000. RS 23087, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of Amendment Number 1 to the professional services agreement with Pape Dawson Engineers in the amount of $75,000 for development services support.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, can I get a motion?
You're the mayor now.
Oh, I'm the mayor. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda? Councilmember Segard?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? All right, let's see what it is.
Ms. Cobb, will you be voting?
Oh, I do need to vote, huh? It's a unanimous yes. Six to zero. We're moving into... Madam Secretary, what is your next item?
Resolutions, RS 23088, consider a memorandum resolution to accept the resignation of Mayor Pro Tem Ken Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle.
Yes, ma'am, mayor and council. As you know, we received a letter of resignation from Councilmember Wilkerson, but also, as you know, Mr. Wilkerson's still on the council. That resignation does not take effect until the council acts on it or until eight days have expired, and so you have the opportunity to act on that tonight, or it would, it would, eight days would be tomorrow. And according to your governing standards, if a vacancy on the city council is required by charter, Section 26, to be filled by city council appointment, the following process will be used. The vacancy will be advertised in the manner that is determined to reach the largest audience, advising Colleen residents of the vacancy, and giving interested residents two weeks to complete and return a fully executed and notarized application for a place on the general election ballot. This form can be obtained from the city secretary's office and must be received by the city secretary's office by the specified date for the applicant to be considered for appointment to the vacant seat. All completed applications received by the deadline will be forwarded to the city council for review. The full city council will conduct interviews with selected applicants. Interviews will be private and... will conduct interviews with selected applicants. Interviews will be private unless prohibited by the Texas Open Meetings Act. City council will conduct deliberations in private unless prohibited by the Texas Open Meetings Act. The appointment will occur in open and properly posted public meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. There are no, well, we do have one from Councilmember Segar.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve RS twenty-three zero eight-eight.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
RS twenty-three zero eight-nine, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of real property for animal services within the city of Colleen.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Assistant City Manager Singh, good evening, ma'am.
The item before you is to discuss the purchase of the East Lake Veterinary Clinic. So a little bit of history on this. The Department of State Health Services conducts inspections at our shelter annually, and the condition of our quarantine building has been cited for the past several years on our inspections. Uh, the Department of State could close the facility and halt operations if the condition is not addressed. Uh, we don't know when that would happen. Again, it's been cited for several years now, but at some point we do have to be working to address it. Uh, the existing quarantine building was constructed in the nineteen-seventies. We've conducted many repairs, um, and at this point it needs to be replaced. Um, I'll have some pictures later that show the issues, but basically the cinder blocks have continued to deteriorate, and we can't create a sanitary surface in order to continue to do quarantines there. Um, if you will recall, in our fiscal year twenty-three CIP, we had started planning for this expense, um, and we put a total of one point eight four million dollars to replace the quarantine building. Uh, this had been planned for a bond issue, um, that was to occur at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. This was prior to all the council's, um, bond discussions, so we kind of changed directions and did get some additional information that this particular thing would not be eligible for that particular type of bond, but the council did allocate money, um, with our mid-year budget amendment, so there are funds available. Um, as we were moving forward to consider possibly constructing a new quarantine building, we were contacted by the owner of East Lake Vet Clinic to see if the city would be interested in purchasing their facilities. Uh, this facility offers improved kennels, enhanced amenities, and accommodations that would, um, provide a better customer experience. Um, if approved, we would actually use this East Lake location as our pet adoption center, more of a forward-facing building for our residents, and we would turn our current adoption facilities, who could then be used as our quarantine facilities. Uh, this new facility has operating rooms, and so it would allow us to, uh, expand on our spay and neuter capabilities and better serve our residents. Here's just a little comparison about, um, what we would get through the purchase of the East Lake Vet Clinic versus actually trying to construct, um, a new quarantine building. And I will say, these numbers are several months old, and so at this point, uh, that one point eight four million would likely need to be increased quite a bit, just because construction costs continue to go up. Um, and so we don't have a estimated date if we were to go the new bid, build route, uh, but we would likely need additional funds for that. Um, this is, these are some pictures of our existing quarantine, um, facilities. Here, as you get closer, you can see, um, some of the, um, damage to the cinder blocks. Um, and here in particular, if you can see, those are areas we've tried to repair and are unable to keep them repaired. Just some more pictures. Here is, the star indicates the location of the East Lake Veterinary Clinic. Um, here's a close-up. It's right across from Long Branch Park. Here are the, um, interior shots of the clinic, and here are some of the amenities with AstroTurf, um, and the operating room, as well as some enhanced kennels there. Um, you can see more pictures of the operating room that would allow us to expand our, um, our services in the future. Um, here are some of the outdoor kennels that exist there. And your alternatives tonight are to do nothing. Um, if you do nothing, we could, uh, risk losing our certification from the state at some point in the future. Um, you could move forward with the construction of a new quarantine facility on the existing site, uh, but we would likely need additional funds just due to the rising construction costs. Or you can move forward with the purchase of the East Lake Veterinary Clinic, and we are recommending that you go with that third option and proceed forward with the purchase of the facility, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Do we have any questions before I go to calling for the motion? Okay, Councilmember Segar.
Uh, yes, I had a couple of questions. Uh, I want to make sure our citizens get the full story, because I, I, I've been contacted by people, you know, that have been on the animal shelter. And I know we've explained it before, but I just want to make sure that they fully understand, because I know some of them said that the new building has like eighteen dog kennels and, you know, four kennels, and that's what they told me. But in the presentation, we have in the new building thirty kennels and twenty kennels for cat. How did we accomplish that? What, how come there's such a difference between what people think and what is actually really happening?
We do plan to add some additional kennels there.
So we got the room to add it and everything?
Yes, sir.
And then the other thing is, um, uh, the walk, and somebody mentioned, you know, the, the distance, you know, when there's, um, when they have to go out and exercise the dogs. Do we have enough room on the outside to do that, too?
Yes, and, and one of the benefits of being right across the, uh, street from Long Branch Park is we have actually talked about potentially a program people could volunteer to come walk the dogs and walk them through the park, um, as some good advertisement, too, for pets that are adoptable, but yes.
And then the other part, my last question is, and you mentioned it, it's on the volunteer. Uh, and I know that in the past, we've had a little bit of a challenge getting them. Are we gonna be able to get more volunteers to, because now we're gonna have two places instead of just one, so I think we're gonna need probably twice as many volunteers as we did before. Is that correct, or?
Not necessarily. Um, we always could use more volunteers, but we run the operations with our staff. Um, but certainly we're hoping that this new, uh, location will attract new interest in it. It's just, if you've been to our current shelter facilities, they're not very inviting, and they're kind of out of the way, and so hopefully this forward-facing facility that's much nicer will attract some new interest.
Well, thank you. Thank you for those answers, and I appreciate it, and I hope that everybody listening, you know, they, they understand what we're trying to do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Everest.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Singh, uh, like Councilmember Segar, I also received, uh, a couple of citizens that reached out and had some questions on this, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate this, um, so that they're aware. The question was, hey, in, in the new building that we're talking about purchasing, the East Lake Veterinary Clinic, um, that there's no room for quarantine, and I told them, well, the, the idea would be, if you look at the old site, um, on Commerce Drive, there's several buildings there. The smallest, I believe, of those buildings is the current quarantine building, so that would be moved to the front building. That's the nicer one, the bigger one?
Yes, the adoption.
Where people normally walk into now would be the quarantine building, and then, okay, gotcha. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because there was some question on it, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Council, Mayor Protam, uh... Madam Mayor, I've moved to approve RS... Number twelve, right here. I moved to approve RS twenty-three zero eight-nine. Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No? Motion carries six to zero, Assistant City Manager Singh. Uh, thanking you and your staff from going beyond. You have thoroughly briefed this council and the public on our way moving forward with this animal shelter, and I am truly grateful and thankful. This is your last night with the city of Colleen. Um, she's an expert, and she has the spirit of excellence. So when you bring stuff before this council, we know you have done your research, you have done your facts, and you had ensured that you stayed within the law. And she will be our city manager in Jero, uh, Texas, and that says a lot about, uh, you and what you have contributed to our city, and we are forever grateful. We're forever thankful, and it would be truly a big joy to feel, uh, your, uh, footprints that you have left, and you have done an extraordinary job in being a mentor to our young women, and, and also to women that work for the city of Colleen. And I just want to take a brief moment to give each council member the opportunity to say how grateful and how thankful we are that you chose to stay here with Mr. Kegel to ensure that each council has been trained properly, that have, you have an excellent working relationship with everyone. You always have a smile, and what I love most about your leadership skill, you just do not have a problem standing up to the council when you know we're going in the right, direct, wrong direction, and it's not for the good of the citizen. I could truly appreciate someone that's just a type A personality like mine. And I hope you got your flowers from the council, Mr. Kegel. And I'm gonna start with Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, uh, Miss Singh. Uh, gonna miss you here, uh, with the city of Colleen. Uh, a few things about Miss Singh. She knows something about everything going on in the city. There's never been a question she was not able to answer or give me a brief on, which I thought was outstanding. Also, as I mentioned before, this is probably one of the most professional women I've ever met, uh, as far as leading the city in the capacity that you have. We're gonna miss you, and thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Councilmember Segar.
Uh, Mayor, I share all the same sentiments. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. God. The two words that we can say tonight is simply, thank you. You know what you've done, you know when you did it, and we are appreciative of your service to this city. Sometimes, when we're women, we're mothers, we're grandmothers, and we're compassionate to the needs of our homes and life, but it's most important that we do our job, and you have done your job. Thank you again for your service. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I appreciate you. I appreciate your consistency and the fact that you always did it with a smile. Thank you.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, council, I'm just so used to her being there, Councilmember Solomon. I want looking up one of our newest members, uh, District Two Rep, Councilmember Solomon. I apologize for that.
It's okay, Madam Mayor. Just want to say thank you for the short time I've been here. Thank you. It's nice meeting you.
And our, our bringing up the rear. Councilmember Everest.
Again, to further reiterate what they said, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, you've always been one to be open-minded and help us find solutions, especially of the, a lot of the North Colleen, um, infrastructure projects. I, I absolutely appreciate that. You're definitely gonna be missed, but I'm sure I'll see you again in Jero.
Thank you so much, Council. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS twenty-three zero nine zero, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of real property located in downtown Colleen.
Good evening, Mr. Reval. Did you present this last week?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I'm well. To the mayor, to Mayor Protam, to the council, the city manager. Um, this is a wonderful opportunity that the city has to purchase a building located at three twenty-four North Gray. Um, as you can see, this property is very historically significant. Uh, been around since nineteen fifteen. It's been a staple, um, in downtown since that time. Just some pictures showing some of the historical uses. For the background, although it's been a staple, um, in the recent years, it's been vacant. Um, and it's been an attractive nuisance. And the property owner, as was mentioned earlier in public comments, um, passed away in January, and her sons inherited the property. And they attempted to sell the property, um, and when they could not, they reached out to the city as an option of last resort and asked us to consider, um, taking on ownership. Consequently, um, city staff, along with, um, KDC's director, Scott Connell, did visit the property, did a tour on March the fourteenth. There are a couple of pictures that I will show, and then we also had a small briefing with the council on March the twenty-first. As a result of the March twenty-first closed session, um, we decided to engage an option period with, um, the current owners of the property. That allowed us to do a couple of things. One is to understand the fair market value for the property. Two, to understand what it would take in terms of repairs to rehab it so that it could be a marketable condition. And then three, um, continue conversations with KDC, um, as a partner to help us engage, um, redevelopment department, partner, and bringing the property back online and back into, to use and on the tax rolls. As relates to the appraisal, as you can see, one of the things I want to point out here, these were the comparables. Um, this is a, a recent appraisal. I think it was conducted back in April, if I'm not mistaken. One of the things I really want to point out is that average, if you look at that average category, you look at the square footage there, um, the average, uh, dollar per, price per square foot is about sixty dollars per square foot. Um, that's gonna be important, because I want to show, in the next slide here, this purchase that we're considering, uh, would come at a much lower value than that sixty dollars a square feet, twenty, twenty-one dollars lower at thirty-nine dollars a square foot. So it's an, an investment that we're making, um, in, in, in a, in a property that the comparables are showing, most certainly when it's brought back to market conditions, could at least get sixty dollars a square feet. If, if I may, I'd like to go back. The average is sixty, but you can see also the, the minimum and, and maximum range, anywhere from fifty-one to sixty-nine dollars a square feet. In addition, we do, I have a letter of commitment, uh, of support from KDC, should the property be acquired. And what that would involve in terms of redevelopment with KDC is several things. One is, as we mentioned before, structural renovation, to bring the structure back to a point where it can be occupied, um, by beneficial, uh, user. Two is, is to provide a process that allows us to attract the best business there, um, and, and then provide that property as a reload, revitalization incentive. And then three would be to develop a, a performance-based, really redevelopment agreement, uh, with that selected business. And all of that would be done in partnership, uh, or, and with KDC, um, hopefully taking the lead, but most certainly in partnership with KDC. Just some of the benefits associated with purchasing the property. Um, number one, allows us to get control and maintain control of downtown. Um, oftentimes, you know, we talk about people investing in downtown. You know, we need to put our, here's an opportunity to put our money where our mouth is. Here's an opportunity for us to make that public investment that can help catalyze some private investment. Uh, number two, as we mentioned earlier, it's a historic asset. It's been around for, for quite some time. It may stay. It's on the corner of Avenue C, very prominent structure. Um, here's an opportunity to, to save that. We weren't out there looking to try to buy this property. They came to us, and, and I believe that was because they believed that we had the ability to save it and that it was salvageable. Number three, the ability to, um, again, deal with this prominent structure. It's, it's currently vacant. There are a number of code enforcement incidents that have been documented associated with the structure, twelve of them to be exact. A number of crime-related incidents has been documented associated with the structure as well, from reports that we received from, from the Colleen Police Department. Again, this will allow us to, to get this structure occupied and get it out of blight status. Um, it, also, we have the ability, most certainly, to, again, attract downtown businesses and a use that helps to support what we're trying to do downtown. Make it more complete, have that foot traffic, you know, the story. Uh, the next to the last one is create opportunities for small businesses that may not have access to funds. Again, part, part of the reason why we believe that, you know, this property hasn't been purchased, because it is, it does require quite a bit of resources and capital to make it happen, um, and small businesses can't do that. If the city can make it easier for that to happen, reposition this building in the market such that that can happen, um, we believe that this would, what this purchase would do for us. us. And then lastly, it will continue to show our dedication to investment in downtown. This council has invested in downtown time and time again and that investment has not been in vain, as shown on the slides, has yielded benefits. We've done the numbers and for every dollar invested in downtown, it's yielded $6 in return. And so this will continue that great arc of revitalization. Some of the consequences, should we fail to purchase it or list it here, we'll continue to have that vacant structure and it'll continue to be an attractive nuisance and that's not a good thing for downtown. Downtown revitalization will be stalled for buildings like this. There are a number, there could be other buildings like this and it will be stalled if we don't have the ability to get in the market and reposition. And then also no control over the future use of the building. That's really, really important. Part of that's connected to making sure that that use is something that brings dollars back to the city and something that brings value back to downtown. And if we fail to purchase, we may lose that value benefit as well as those dollar benefits. And then lastly, I think it's also important to point out, you could very well have an instance where an investor does come in and they buy the property and they just choose to sit on it and nothing happens. And there are a couple of properties like that in downtown already. So what are the alternatives? Do not authorize the purchase, authorize it with modifications, or authorize the purchase as presented and we're recommending as staff that it be authorized as presented. Also have Ms. Kate Chisso, who is our downtown revitalization director, and also Mr. Scott Connell here as well with KDC.
Thank you, Council. Can I get a motion to approve resolution RS-23-090? Councilmember Alvarez.
Madam Mayor, before I make that motion, I wanted to say to Mr. Revel, thank you for bringing this to the council. You know, a lot of cities, a lot of cities that we talk about, that citizens talk about, that they love and like, that have things that our city doesn't have, have all done this. It's something that's tried and tested. We're not reinventing the wheel here. I love the aspect that we're able to control our own narrative of what Colleen is and what it can be and what it will be. And I think ultimately, the best part of it is we're gonna get a viable business that's gonna produce sales tax and pay property tax in our downtown and we're gonna have a say in what that can or can't be. So with that, I would move to approve RS 23090.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra.
Before I make a motion in a second, I did have a couple of questions here. And first off, I just want to say thank you because I know when you brought this before to us, one of the things that I made mention was the partnership with KDC. And I just want to say thank you for doing that because I think it's important that, you know, we have that partnership because, you know, that's what they do. They're in the business and all that and not to take anything away from us, but having somebody else partner up with us to help create and bring in somebody that in time can fulfill that. And so the other thing is that, and I don't know if you answered this or not, but the parking, you know, parking is very important. Do we know how much parking is available to that building or is it just out in the street?
Well, there is some on-street parking that's available on both sides, actually.
Both sides?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I know that there's many different options available, so it's unlimited, but, you know, the first thing that pops into my mind is the biggest thing we need downtown, right? It's a grocery store, but, you know, I don't know if that's big enough or what, but, you know, you'd need a lot of parking. And then the last question is on the zoning because I know that a lot of times we do get businesses that want to establish, but they're limited on the zoning because, you know, we do have a lot of churches. I know we've talked about that. We've kind of fixed that, but what is the zoning? Is that a B5?
Yeah, the zoning is B5, so that's really the broadest category.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, appreciate that. And I say, I concur with Mr. Alvarez. I think this is great. We appreciate you doing this. And with that, I make a second.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Madam, I was gonna second that motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd, do you have anything to say?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Cobb, do you have anything to say?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Solomon, do you have anything to say? Thank you, Mr. Revel and Kate and your team, as everyone stated, but I just wanted to say the visions, the best thing you could have done was to hire Kate.
Yes, ma'am.
Wave your hand in the back. That's one of the best things that you could have done.
Yes, ma'am.
She is a co-getter and I know I question everything 24/7 because it's the taxpayers' money and I want to ensure that we're doing right by our resident and she got an answer to everything I said. And I thank you for setting it up for us to go, the council. And Mr. Kegel, you did too, to let us go and visit the site and go inside and have the relatives there and the family that owned the building. Thank you for all you do, Mr. Revel.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
We're very fortunate to have Kate. Her passion is matchless and I'm just really excited about what she has brought to this city.
We haven't seen you nothing yet.
Yes, ma'am.
She's just getting started. Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. We will now have our public hearing. Council, you have three times to speak for three minutes. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23031, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city of Colleen," excuse me, "an ordinance of the city council of the city of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Drake. How are you?
Good. Thank you. I briefed this item last week and I would be happy to do it again or if you have any questions.
Counsel? No, ma'am. We have to open up our public hearing. Public hearing is open. Sean Bryce. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Yeah, mine is simple. I'm in opposition of any added expenditures whatsoever. Stop spending the money. Budgets are getting out of hand nationwide, statewide and local-wide. It's just getting too much. It's becoming an overload to the residents of Colleen. A lot of people that are vets or that are elderly and they're on a fixed income, they're not gonna, they're not affording KISD or the city of Colleen's tax burden. And adding to that is just getting insurmountable. So I stand in opposition of any increase to the city's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion? Or PH-23-031, Councilmember Alvarez?
Move to approve PH 23-031.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Press, Madam Secretary.
PH 23035, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Paula Scoggins on behalf of James Lee, case number Z 23-13, to rezone a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Y and J Edition from B5 Business District to BC 1, General Business and Alcohol Sales District. The property is locally addressed as 1103 West Veterans Memorial Boulevard, Suite 104, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Y and J Edition from B5 Business District to BC 1, General Business and Alcohol Sales District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Revel, welcome back, sir.
Yes, ma'am. The council had an opportunity to hear this one last week, but if you'd like me to, I can do it again.
No, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I will now invite the applicant to come up. Ma'am, you can come back up. Good evening and you have four minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paula Scoggins and this is my partner.
I'm Amina Zissim.
Last week, we weren't, I wasn't able to come because I had my shoulder replaced and so it wasn't something that I could actually make and it was quick and easy. We're here to just try to see if we can get our, get approved for the rezoning for the liquor license. We're opening up a hookah cigar lounge and it's a mother-daughter entity with both veterans and so it's something we had to go through to make this process.
Yes, ma'am. It's just something that we've always wanted to do and to do it together with my mom has been, it's been great. And we just, honestly, I mean, how can you have a cigar without, you know, a nice cognac or something? Whiskey, bourbon? So, but that's the whole reason why we're asking to be rezoned. We're still looking forward to opening it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just hope you guys approve this.
Counsel, do y'all have any questions? Councilmember Segarra, is that a question?
I don't have a question.
Okay, because we have to do a public hearing.
I don't have a question. There you go. I don't have a question. I just want to congratulate you and say thank you for doing this because I love entrepreneurs here in our city and I just want to wish you the best of luck if the council does approve this in your endeavor. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council members have any positive comments about bringing a new business into the city of Colleen, especially on that north side? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed and I know Councilwoman Gonzalez, you had clicked on, but I had to do public hearing. The floor is yours, ma'am, to make the motion.
I move-- Let me put on my glasses before I--
PH-23-035.
Yes, ma'am. I move to approve PH 23-035.
Mayor Pro Tim Cobb?
I second that motion.
Thank you both. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Be ready, Madam Secretary.
DS 23054, discuss and consider process and timeline for filling city council vacancy.
Thank you. City Attorney Clemens, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You go ahead earlier to tonight to accept Councilmember Wilkerson's request. And therefore we have a vacancy. I think my microphone just came on. Section 26, as the, as the city manager stated earlier, section 26 of the city charter provides that a vacancy other than the mayor shall be filled by appointment of the remaining members of council. And then your governing standard set that process of a two-week period of applications being open and then that the council has interviews and makes that appointment. And so for this item, what I'm looking for is direction from the council on when you want to advertise and when you want to set these interviews.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And one of the recommendations that I'll make to the council that we need to start this process as soon as possible to fill this vacancy, especially as we get ready to go into the budget season. And I think, Mr. Kegel, did you read the process on what it take? Could you read that one more time, please?
Yes, ma'am, I did. You mean to read it again?
I don't know if I missed it. I was--
I did read it. I kind of jumped the gun.
Okay. Okay. Can you read it again for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And he's gonna go over for the council and the audience, the process of how to fill a vacancy if there's a year left on that council member position. Please, Mr. Kegel.
Vacancy will be advertised in the manner that is determined to reach the largest audience advising Colleen residents of the vacancy and giving interested residents two weeks to complete and return a fully executed and notarized application for a place on the general election ballot. This form can be obtained from the city secretary's office and must be received by the city secretary's office by the specified date for the applicant to be considered for appointment to the vacant seat. All completed applications received by the deadline will be forwarded to the city council for review. The full city council will conduct interviews with selected applicants. Interviews will be private unless prohibited by the Texas Open Meetings Act. And finally, city council will conduct deliberations in private unless prohibited by Texas Open Meetings Act. The appointment will occur in an open and properly posted public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kate, for the clarification on how to fill this position. And before I open up to the council, I just wanted to state that we are truly honored and blessed to have Mayor Pro Tim Wilkerson. I can speak for me and the council probably feel the same way. To be my Mayor Pro Tim, he was a solid leader. He was precise. He studied his material and when he spoke, he always spoke with passion and for the people of Colleen as a whole. And that's what he really did. He really cared about the people at whole. But it was a sad day when he decided to turn in his resignation. That is another boy, as well as the assistant city manager, Singh Boy, would be hard to fill with his military background, his leadership skills, his precise to detail. It really made this council a great makeup. So in order to fill that, the person that come in, that if they, they should be a person that's willing to learn. It doesn't have to be honest to the council, an individual that had been on the council prior. New ideas, giving other residents the opportunity to step up to the plate. And I just highly recommend that we get with communication, if it's okay with Mr. Kegel, this should go out no later than Thursday to the people because, or tomorrow, because we already been through this process. With that being said, Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm in agreement with you. We need to do it as soon as possible. I was gonna say Monday, but I'm okay with Thursday, two weeks after that, close it out. The only question that I had is, do we, once we get those nominees, those candidates in, do we have to do it as a workshop item first or have a special meeting to go through those candidates and then put it as a council meeting for a vote? Or how are we gonna, how does that look like?
That's up to you. It will need to be at a meeting to actually make the appointment. The interviews could be at a special workshop. I will note that I look back, the last time this happened, last year and last March, you conducted the interviews in a special meeting and then also appointed the person at the end of that meeting, all in one special meeting. So that is an option for you.
Okay.
But you could do it in a special workshop, interviews and then a meeting later.
Yeah, no, that's how I would like to see it. So at the end of two weeks, you know, maybe that following Monday, because I think on the 13th is a workshop, but maybe that following Monday on the 12th, maybe have a special meeting on that so that the council can get together with the candidates and all that and maybe just go from there, if that's all right.
Before we make a motion, we've got other council members want to talk and give their comments on it. I know Councilmember Boyd does. Before we go into make a motion, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Segarra, just want to give everyone an opportunity to weigh in on this and everyone will have options. Because we want to make sure y'all dates are available to meet on these days because every time we do something like this, someone cannot make it. And this is a very important position that we must fill. So we need all council members on deck to make this decision because I really don't want it to have to come down to just because council members are not here that the majority votes go to someone that is more in favor because I know you than the most qualified. go to someone that is more in favor, because I know you than the most qualified. So I think it's very important that we get a date, that we all can be here, we owe it to the citizen, to give them a fair and just time to fill these positions. So, council, if you don't, if you still want to make a motion, Councilmember Sagara, please do, but I really think others should speak. Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I was just going to second what I understood to be a motion. I do believe that's, that's an appropriate amount of time to give for the applicants. The question is, of course, would all the council be available on Monday, that 19th of June? So there's availability, there's a second for that.
What was it, 12th?
Well, it's 12th, I'm sorry. Correct, Monday 12th of June.
Yes, counsel, I'm sorry.
Is there a time?
We're not, we have a question, Mr. Cagle, I apologize, sir, for cutting you off. Councilmember Gonzalez?
So, Madam Mayor, I will not be in town, however, I can be present and do my interviews virtually, I was told, so that I can be present virtually.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Stand by.
During the interview.
Oh, we still got, we got a motion.
I'm sorry.
But you can still talk about, I just want, I'm going to come right back to you. I just wanted to verify, Councilmember Gonzalez, that we had Zoom, and you would be able to connect with us on June 12, and the answer is yes. Councilmember Sagara, Solomon.
I know, during the interview, if there are several applicants, are we going to interview them all at one time, that day?
Yes, sir.
I mean, say if you have, so it'd be a whole day, I mean, you're talking about.
It'd be a whole, it'd be a whole night, because we probably do interviews at five, and see, that's the unique thing about it, you do it on a Saturday, you can do it early in the morning, but to be fair to the residents, all residents.
Right.
You have, if you do it at night, you have to do it after five, because some people work, and in some cases, people don't get off till six, so in order to be fair, to give everybody the opportunity, we can still do it on that date, but we can put that caveat, whoever called them, ask them what time, we're going to do it after five, what time you get off, and then that's how you have to line them up. So it has to be, through the weekdays, it has to be after five. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. So, Councilmember Board, he said that he heard Councilmember, oh, City Attorney, ma'am.
I, I did want to mention that the governing standards do state that the interviews will be private unless prohibited by the Open Meetings Act, and so I think what's happened in the past is that the interviews have been conducted in closed session, and then the appointment was in open session.
Yes, ma'am. We have always done it that way, yes, ma'am. Thank you for clarifying, clarifying, clarifying that. City Manager Cagle?
Yes, ma'am, I was just thinking, if you get a large number, say you get 20 applications, you might want to meet before that to go over to decide if you want to narrow that down and interview only three or five, or whatever, whatever number you might choose.
Thank you for that recommendation, but I support you, Mr. Cagle, on things, but we're talking about the citizens, some people will probably never get the opportunity to even go through this process, and for us to just, whatever people put on paper, if you already been here and done this, and been a council member, you're going to trump anyone else, but I think, and my recommendation, that it should be open to all citizens, even if we have to do two days, that's just, it has to be fair, that's just my opinion. With that being said, Councilmember Sagara.
Mayor, I never made that motion, so I just want to go ahead on the record and make that motion.
I apologize, because when Councilmember Board say he understood the motion, so I just, okay. Go ahead, non.
Yeah, and so I, I want to go ahead and make a motion, and nor did, we set any standards, there's two, obviously it is open to everybody, but I would like to make a motion that we handled, we have those interviews on the 12th of June, but depending on how many applications we have, we need a cutoff, and so the 12th is the date of the interview, so if we start it on this Thursday, what is the cutoff of the applications?
The, the dates on tracking from Thursday would be May 25th through June 8th.
So on June 8th, you know, we will know how many we have, and yeah, I would, I would like to start it earlier, if we have a lot. If we only have a few, then that's okay, but, you know, I would like to make a motion that our interviews are on the 29th at 1:00 in the afternoon for now.
It's the 12th.
And.
It's the 12th.
The 12th, excuse me, thank you. At 1:00 in the afternoon, the cutoff is on the 8th, and so, and, and I understand the process, because we've been through this before, and sometimes you'll get applications that have not lived here long enough, that don't live in the city boundary, so you know, we're going to go through that filtering out process, but we have set no other requirements than, than the requirements that are on a regular election, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. So my motion is on the 12th at 1:00 PM.
Councilmember Board, you was making a motion.
I second that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more for the good or the order to discuss this item? Okay, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no.
If I could get clarification.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Time, please.
Before we vote, on, for June 12th at 1:00 PM, for the interviews and the appointment, are we, is that a special meeting to do all, all in one, or that's just the interviews, and then we'll come back at a later date for the appointment?
My concern is, with just that date, it's predicated on how long they want to stay here. If they have 20 applicants, and we start at five, we're going to be waiting until the 11, 12 o'clock at night, so I, I don't know if that's what they want to do, or do they want to have, give that space, like I stated, to have two dates. So a Saturday would be good, start at eight, and we will leave when we finish, but it's 12, so what do you recommend, Councilmember Sagara, that was your suggestion?
I want to clarify, if, you know, we'll have a selection on the 12th, to be appointed on the 13th, during our, 13th, I think it's a workshop, so we'll have a, a special council meeting to install, because we're not, you know, if we do those interviews, we're not going to have them come back, they don't know, so once we make that selection, we'll invite them to come back for our Tuesday regular workshop at 5:00 PM to square them in. Is there anything else clarification we got? We're good?
I think I understand, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary.
DS-23055, discuss a complaint against an elected official.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. In pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, VTCA Government Code 55.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 23rd day. On the May 2023, at, at 7:03 PM, PM under the following authority, section 55.074, Personnel Matters, the city council will discuss a complaint against an elected official. The Meeting Act does not require an open meeting to hear a complaint or charge against a public officer. Agenda item DS-23-005, we will now go into closed meeting. All council members, I press, except Councilmember Sagara, the meeting completed, the council completed its closed meeting on May 23rd, 2023, at 5, at 7:55. Can I get a motion to adjourn? By Councilmember Alvarez made a motion, Madam Secretary, and we get a second. Councilmember Board, Madam Secretary, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.